Welcome to the College and Career Ready Podcast, your go-to resource for all things related to preparing our students for success in their college and career journey. My name is Sonia Casique and I will be your host and guide on this exciting journey towards a bright future. Our mission is simple, to empower our parents and students by elevating their confidence and resourcefulness. We believe that you deserve all the tools and support necessary to open the doors to endless possibilities of success. And with our community, you don't have to do this alone. So come with me and let's get started. Hi friend, welcome to the College and Career Ready Podcast. I'm your host Sonia Casique. Today I have a question for our parents. Does your teen have an interest in science, the human body? Or is considering opportunities within and outside of healthcare? Are they considering medical school and wanting to explore undergraduate programs of interest for pre-med? Do they love science, calculus, advanced math, or statistics? Or do they like to problem solve or analyze data? If you answer yes to any of these questions, then you will love our conversation today with our returning guest, Andy Garcia. Today will be the perfect episode as we discuss the career opportunities within the field of biomedical engineering. Andy was one of our guests here at the College and Career Ready Podcast, episode number forty, The Triumphs and Trials of a Columbia University Graduates. And now he is here to share his career journey as a biomedical engineer. If you wanted to check out that episode, make sure you check our show notes or the direct link. Andy will help us explore this career through his own career journey. Andy lays out the roadmap for those with a passion for math and science, and one who has excellent communication skills and a keen interest to understanding the human body. As he discusses everything from medical school to niche fields like biomedical engineering for space exploration. Andy is like a big brother sharing openly his experience and wisdom gained through invaluable lessons. He not only shares the highs but the lows and how he has overcome it all and continues to learn more about himself through the process. His determination landed him a role at NASA in Houston, Texas, proving that a dedicated approach can open doors to incredible opportunities. And if you're interested in learning more about this career, I have also shared some links in my show notes, so make sure you check those out. But before we get started, I'd like to express my gratitude to all our listeners. If this is your first time, welcome. I'm so happy you're here with us today. This past week, the College and Career Ready Podcast just celebrated its one year anniversary. And I celebrate this milestone with you, our listener. If you know of someone who would benefit from joining our community, invite them, my friends, by sending them the direct link to our podcast or share it with your personal community on social media. And to make sure we stay connected, subscribe to our newsletter. Our show notes will have a direct link to join our newsletter, where you will get most recent news and services available only to our community. You can also go to our website, collegecareerready.org, that's collegecareerready.org, where you can also join our newsletter there too, find our podcast blogs and so much more. And lastly, I want to give a special thanks to one of our listeners, Felicia, for sending me this message. She wrote, "I just started listening to your podcast. It's amazing." I have shared it on my Facebook. To our new listener Felicia, I want to say thank you. I love hearing from my listeners as they share behind the scenes what they're doing to support our community. Alright friends, well, let's get started. So without further ado, here is our episode with Andy Garcia.
Welcome to the College and Career Ready Podcast. Today we have Andy Garcia and Andy has been a guest in our podcast before. We loved having him as a guest. He shared a lot of, a lot of knowledge with us, but today, he is going to be sharing with us his experience, his career journey as a biomedical engineer. He will be sharing with us what that career looks like and what his plans are for the future. So welcome Andy, welcome back to the College and Career Ready Podcast.
Hi, hi Sonia and hi folks. I'm happy to be back and excited to share a little bit about biomedical engineering and what this, I think, exciting and just very interesting career path looks like.
Yeah, and to my audience, Andy did share in our first episode with him, his experience thinking that he wanted to pursue a career as a pediatrician, medical doctor. And it wasn't until his senior year, thanks to a class that he took, that it opened his eyes to another possibility. And he really considered the option of being a biomedical engineer and that is the degree that he pursued at Columbia University. So Andy, tell us a little bit about what a career as a biomedical engineer entails.
Definitely. So I think whenever I think of biomedical engineering and you know, sort of the career paths that that looks like when you're studying it. Biomedical engineering is very much a STEM-heavy field, like most of the other engineering. It's very multidisciplinary. You'll take courses, it's sort of mixing chemical engineering, mechanical engineering, pure and hard sciences, right? Chemistry, organic chemistry, that sort of stuff. And then also ties in some novelties, right? Things like how the tissue interacts with, with materials, biological tissue and how that interacts with man-made materials. So a relatively new field, I would say it's start inception twenty, thirty-ish years ago, with a lot of different possibilities with what you can do with this degree, right? So I think before I sort of go into the path of biomedical engineer, whenever I think of a biomedical engineering degree, right? There's a lot of things you can do with it, but the big ones, right, are it's a science degree, right? And it's related to the biomedical sciences, a natural step for someone and for some of my classmates, I was supposed to go to medical school right after. And then another option with this degree is that you can practice as an engineer, right? And there's so many subfields you can go into with that. You can go into research and that's its own little umbrella of so many things. Or you can work maybe in a clinical setting in a hospital, working as a technician and/or engineer for the systems. You can go into, let's see, into industry, right? So like medical devices, pacemakers, AEDs, that sort of stuff, biomedical engineers around staff at all of those companies, consulting, management consulting, some biomedical engineers go into that field. And then there's also some niche fields, not, yeah, there are all kind of niche fields that are small, fields that folks fall into by interest or they fall into. And I think that sort of where I'm at right now qualifies as that it's biomedical engineers in outer space. That's one. And then some other things, maybe biomedical engineering, just in extreme environments, undersea, that's a thing. And even ties to perhaps animals, right? Veterinary biomedical engineering. So just a lot of different places, but yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll definitely touch base on your current position. But before that, tell me a little bit of what skills, interests, abilities in the student, would you think that would be an ideal fit for a degree in biomedical engineering?
Definitely. So I think the first umbrella, right, is just engineering at large. So having a penchant for math and science, of course, very important. At the same time, I mean, folks don't always add it in, but I think English reading, I think that's very important to being able to both communicate effectively, which is paramount to be an engineer, but also to, to be able to, to understand, you know, the issues and the problems around, right? Also communication. I think that's very important and overlooked upon whenever folks come engineering. And then for the biomedical side of biomedical engineering, right, like making it a little more specific, just adding in some general interest, right? And these are, there's different reasons for this, but for me, it was a fascination with the human body that I've had since I was a child. And you know, through, whenever I decided, whenever I wanted to be a pediatrician, a fascination with the human body. For other folks, it might be a fascination or a desire, a deep, strong desire, to go and make the world a better place by helping people. And I think it's important to note, there's plenty of biomedical engineers who went and studied BME because they wanted to help improve people's lives, but maybe they didn't want to be physicians, right? Maybe that's not your thing. Biomedical engineering is an amazing outlet and biomedical engineers are one of the teammates that work with physicians to, to get a patient to feel better. And definitely a career path to consider if you really want to help people in that capacity, but maybe medical school and going to medical school isn't your interest or what you want to do.
For you, what were you planning to do with your degree as a biomedical engineer while you were going to school?
Hi friend, before we dive back into today's engaging discussion, we have an exciting announcement to make. Are you eager to stay up to date with the latest college and career ready news, insightful blogs, and gain early access to the following week's episode topic? Well, we've got just the thing for you. I'm thrilled to introduce our College and Career Ready Newsletter. By joining our community, you'll be part of a vibrant group of parents and students with aspirations of being college and career ready. Plus, you'll get exclusive access to all the valuable resources we have to offer. So how do you join? It's simple. Just head over to collegecareerready.org, all one word, collegecareerready.org, and navigate to the resource tab. There you'll find a signup link to our newsletter. It's quick and easy to join. And it's the best way to stay connected with us and elevate your college and career journey. Join us today at collegecareerready.org and click on the resource tab where you can sign up to our newsletter. We can't wait to welcome you into our community. Thank you for being part of our podcast family. And now, back to the show.
So my first two years while I was in school, I was planning to go to medical school. And that's a good thing about biomedical engineering, the vast majority of your prerequisite, the vast majority of your required coursework overlaps and aligns with the prerequisite coursework to apply to medical school. Which is always a plus, right? Because you can really study anything to go to medical school, but whenever it overlaps, it's like perfect, it's just a good match. So that was sort of my plan those first two years. Then COVID hit and I had a change of heart, you know, just witnessing things that were going on. And that was sort of where I was like, hey, you know, being an eighteen-year-old and choosing to study biomedical engineering was pretty smart move on my end because I'm not scrambling for what I'm going to do after I graduate. I have a good degree. I'm very much interested in what I'm studying and I was very excited to go into those last few years studying biomedical engineering in the meat of it. And I was excited to take that in some shape or form into industry and, and private engineering practice. And, and yeah, that was sort of the, what led me, or that's what I was thinking while I was in school, right? So those last few years, I very much had a focus on, okay, what are the subfields of biomedical engineering that interest me, right? Into research, not really my thing, tissue engineering, and you know, I kind of, I like that. And I realized those last years that I really liked working with people and talking to people. And sort of, I was like, okay, that's going to be important, right? As I start my career search, my senior year of college, it has to be a job where I'm going to be interacting with people all the time. So I think that's sort of the, the path I went on. It was leading to medical school and then it just had this little branch into being really an engineer.
Yeah, you know, and I appreciate you sharing that because most students, I'm, yeah, I think I could say most students really think about, if they're wanting to go to medical school, they think biology degree or chemistry degree. But outside of research or very limited opportunities, it's kind of hard to do anything with just a biology degree or chemistry degree. But biomedical engineering degree definitely opens a lot of doors should life, you know, change, your experiences change, your beliefs, your interests change, that, that is a backup plan.
Definitely. And I think two things that I like very important, like you mentioned, most folks think scientific error biology or chemistry. And like you have to do that because you're going to go to medical school. Before I came across biomedical engineering, I wanted to study chemistry, but I loved chemistry, I still do. But then I sort of, the calculus came in and I wanted to keep on taking calculus and math courses. But I think it's important to note that, you know, depending on, you know, how certain you are, you want to go to medical school. And, and also your other interests, it's very doable to go and study something not, there's folks that study, you know, dance and, and will take the prerequisites to go to medical school and get in, right? And they have this background as a dancer, with the knowledge that you need to go into medical school and they'll go to medical school. And that's, that's one avenue for folks. Another is to just make yourself a more rounded, as I'll say, individual, right? To give yourself different opportunities postgraduate, like you said, if your interests change. And that's sort of what I did, sort of just having a back, a plan B. If medical school wasn't going to happen, medical school was very much my focus those first two years. But I wanted to have a plan B. I was like, I knew that medical school was, you know, it was pretty an eight to twelve-year commitment after college and all of that and told. And so I just wanted to leave my doors open. The one caveat I will say to considering studying engineering or, or something that, you know, is a little more non-traditional to going into medical schools, just understand that there's majors that are built, that are just more rigorous than other majors, right? The courses you take are going to be more difficult. For most folks, physics is, you know, it's one of the hardest subjects out there. If you're studying engineering, you're going to be taking at least two, at least a four-year physics, possibly more. And that's possibly going to affect your GPA because it's a difficult course. And that's going to have ramifications for your medical school application, right? So there's trade-offs there, right? You know, you're an engineer and you have that, but I think it's something worth considering. And I definitely overlooked that whenever I was thinking about that in high school. But again, like it's what you value and what you want to get out of that experience. I think it's super important and something to go with.
Great point, great point. I'm mentioning about the rigor of it. And okay, so during the four years that you were at Columbia, did you have any experiences, any shadowing internships that allowed you to see what branch of biomedical engineering you can go into? It wasn't in COVID years, so I'm sure the last two years were a little difficult.
Definitely. So it was definitely that threw me off a little bit. But another thing, whenever I was, you know, studying, whenever I was in school studying BME, I was very much inundated with the science system and coursework. And by inundated, I mean, like I felt like I was drinking out of a fire hose. So I was like, you know, I want to explore things outside of, outside of engineering and outside of the sciences in terms of internships. Biomedical engineering, as we go forward into the future, is very heavily related to bioinformatics. And the intersection of computer science and biomedical engineering, and what large amounts of, of data that we've never had access to because we haven't had the resources to manage it, what that means, right? For being able to, to look and analyze at the human body, at the human genome. So I guess that was one, I guess, an unexpected blessing of COVID, right? We really got to dive into that technical side, the computerized side of biomedical engineering and what, yeah, having access to so much data does to the field. So that's, you know, one, one thing that I also got to sort of shadow. And then another thing in between my, the summer after I graduated high school, I did a rotation program with MD Anderson for high school students and it turned for students who just graduated high school. And I sort of got to go on rotations and participate, take in a little bit of research at MD Anderson School of Health Professions. And so that was a little bit more of clinical facing and all the students say they weren't our engineers, they're planning to study engineering. But they were all studying, planning to study hard science with intention to work in the medical field. So that was sort of interesting there. And, and yeah, I think I, just because of where I went to school and the folks I was interacting with, I got exposed to, through my classes, to those different subfields just differently. And yeah, like one of the courses, Introduction to Biomedical Engineering, one and two, each semester is broken up into three, I guess mini-classes as I'll call them. And we sort of dove deep into different sides of biomedical engineering. So biomedical imaging, biomechanics, tissue engineering, right? And there was six of these. So I really got to, they sort of brought in, it was sort of a guest professor who was an expert in their field. And they would teach us all about, you know, this subfield of BME and how it relates to engineering. And so I got those unique experiences and ultimately, I was just ensuring that you get those experiences because they're important whenever you go into your career search.
Yes, absolutely. And so currently you work for Space Center Houston. So tell us how that happened. You graduated. When did you start, when did you start applying for jobs?
So LULAC's National Educational Service Center in Houston. They had, I, so through a scholarship, I got my senior year of high school, I made a connection there. So I kept in touch with this connection and I think she reached out to me as my freshman year of college approached me. She's like, hey, what are you going to do for the summer, right? And I was like, you know, I'm going to like rest, it's in a difficult year. So then she offered me a position as a mentor and a tutor with an upward down math and science program that she runs. And so this was underserved students from the Raul Isaias School for Success here in Houston, who get to spend one and a half to two months of their summer taking college level courses at HCC. And so they sort of needed guides, right? Folks who've been in college and who know the material and can, can guide them in that direction. And so I did that very much in education-based role where I got to different capacities, right? Because as I got my last year with them, I taught a course related to STEM and, you know, exploration of standard, a high and intensive level. But it was just funny because my parents were, they are educators. I was sitting engineering here, I was spending my summers as an engineering student, really partaking in education experiences, right? And being in the field of education. So because of the, I guess, anxieties I had about applying to things and not getting accepted, I started early. It must have been senior year, like the senior year of high school for me, right, was relatively a breeze. I got to experience different things and the classes I thought in my, like subjectively were easier. So I immediately after things having break, I was already on the job search. I wasn't necessarily applying yet, but I was looking. And I had, you know, being around students who, like they would stress out in my classmates about applying to internships a year before they were. I was like, okay, I want to get on the ball because like now, like this is an internship, this is like real life. And what I want to do after I graduate. So I started sending in applications around December. And what sort of drew, informed my application process was wanting to come back home, but also wanting to continue like the education sector stuff, which is interesting because I didn't, I ended up home, but not in education. So the mindset I had at the time is what I'll say, I saw two avenues for me to work in Houston was a BME. I was either going to somehow work in the hospitals, right, at the Texas Medical Center and sort of a clinical-facing role. Or, and this was just me going off on a leg, I was like, maybe, just maybe there's like something related to biomedical engineering with the space program at NASA. And so that's where I started just using LinkedIn, NASA Human Health, NASA Biomedical Engineering. And I came across some folks that, that worked there as well with biomedical engineering backgrounds. There's biomedical flight controllers and, and project managers and integrators. And that's how I came across that small but very present subfield that I ended up working in. But that sort of would inform my job experience. So I was sort of like, I want to come back home. I miss being near my family and I, I did that. At the same time though, because I was very, on top of still having like a sense of a desire for adventure, but also having this deep connection to education, right? Because of those experiences, I applied to a fellowship with the Congressional Hispanic Caucus Institute in DC. It was a, a year-long fellowship would have been for the first year postgraduate of college. And it would have been working, you know, with, as a congressional fellow. And I got to sort of pick my area of focus. And in that application, my area of focus was access to STEM education. Because of what I had done those summers and because of, you know, just growing up with my family, right? And their educators, not, they don't teach, neither of them teaches STEM, but you know, just seeing that and being able to continue that and that was important to me. So I applied to those two things, hoping that someone would give you an offer because I was not confident. Like the reason why I started so early, by the way, was because, not because I was like going to have so many offers. It was because I was worried that I was going to end up unemployed. That's what I said. I was like, if I end up without anything, I'm going to be unemployed. I will be applying to jobs full-time. Someone will hire me, but I'm going to be unemployed graduating. And I ended up getting, so I, that job experience was rough, but I was also not, I had very much grown, right? So it was, it was rough in terms of the outcomes of them. I must have applied in between fifty and a hundred jobs. And these jobs were, are all separate from the CHCI Fellowship. That Fellowship was month, six to seven-month-long applicants. Yeah, it was just, you know, interviews and essays and all that stuff. But so fifty to a hundred jobs, which wide margin, but it was, it was a huge amount of jobs that I sent applications to. I heard back from roughly five, there were two of them and I got offered one of them. I got offered that job like two weeks before my graduation date. And then the CHCI thing, right? So the other thing with CHCI, I love that Fellowship. I love everything that they stand for. The pay was a very low pay, but I was passionate about it. So I was like, it's okay, I'm going to make do. But they sort of said from the beginning that their timeline was as I graduated. So I wouldn't know whether or not they accepted me until a week before my graduation or actually it was a week of my graduation. So I was like, that's crazy, right? For me to not apply to anything else and throw, like you mentioned, right? Putting all your eggs in one basket when you're applying to colleges, same like idea, same idea. I was like, I can't put all my eggs in this one basket, not get it, then what am I going to do, right? I'm going to like, I'm not okay with that. So I need to have redundancy. So that's why, you know, sort of applied to jobs concurrently with that. So I, two weeks before I graduated, I found out that I got an offer here with NASA and I put a pin on it. I hadn't yet heard from CHCI. I mean, you know, excited that I was like, okay, I have an opportunity to go back home and I have a job, right? And then like two or three days before the university commencement, I got a call that I got offered the CHCI. So then I was like, okay, this is funny because for once in my college experience, I have the balls in my court. I get to pick. I don't have the option. And I gave myself like a week to balance some areas and what I wanted out of, you know, postgraduate life. And I ended up choosing the position here in Houston as a contractor at NASA.
I love it. I love it. I love it. Okay. So you got the position at Johnson Space Center. Wow, I'm pretty excited because we went from like thinking medical and now working at Johnson Space Center. Tell us about your, your job there, your career.
Yeah. So when I was applying to jobs at NASA, I was, I mean, I think one of the best pieces of advice whenever you apply to things is cast a wide net, even if your qualifications don't line up. Like, don't count yourself out. Let the folks who pick count you out if they so want to. And that was the mentality I had when applying. So I sent in many applications to positions at Johnson Space Center. And I very much went in blindly. I did, I have no family that works with human health and performance at Johnson Space Center. And these job is biomedical flight controller and crew health checks, system management integrator. I was like, that's an acronym. I have no idea what it means. Like what is an engineering integrator? I was just applying and ensuring, sort of just seeing that I, I thought I had what it took to do the job. And for the most part, I was just like, okay, I can, I can learn this. So I sent them many applications. I ended up getting hired as a check system management integrator, which is an engineering integrator, technical integrator for the crew healthcare system on the International Space Station.
Oh, wow.
Well, they, NASA loves acronyms. Yeah, like acronyms for everything. So I guess from here on out, crew healthcare system checks.
Awesome.
And in that role, essentially, I work with the checks system manager who is in charge of making all of the calls for checks hardware from an engineering perspective, right? So do, when everything's break, what are you going to do? Whenever things need to be resupplied, a lot of the stuff that, you know, we have air quality monitors, we have medicines, right? That we fly medical kits, all of that, all of those things expire and need resupply. And it falls on the team that I'm on to track when things expire. And then the logistics of, you know, there's, we don't have buses or trains that lead to the space station. There are certain launches that involve a lot of coordination with other engineers. So, you know, we look at the calendar that's preset and what flight can we launch this on and what if the flight slips? And so it's sort of a very dynamic role that deals with the day-to-day operations of the International Space Station and all of its moving parts.
Yeah, super, super. And I'm so glad you brought the job interview process conversation here because we have students in high school and in college that are listening to us. And, you know, even though they might not have graduated from college yet, this can definitely help them when they're job interviewing. It's the fact that you don't know what they're looking for and sometimes you putting a strike through your own opportunity without even trying, it's, it's already a no. So if you don't apply, obviously it's an automatic no. And if you apply, you never know what it is they're specifically looking for or that they might see in your experience that might be something that, that they want to bring on board to their team.
Exactly. And that, it's so true. I, I've built, you know, close relationships with the folks I work with. And I have not yet worked up the confidence has them. So why do you pick me? Not anyone else. But we have had conversations and I'm sure at some point I will just because I'm curious. But they, you know, we've talked about, you know, whenever they see my performance and whenever they see what I've done for the team. And I've been told, you know, just in passing, like, oh, like, and like, that's exactly, we picked you because you could get along, because you had this aspect that would mean you could work well with so-and-so who we work with. And, you know, that's going to make our lives easier. So like you mentioned, you have no idea what they're looking for and what the needs of the team are, right? And the description they put out is very generic and it doesn't cover, it doesn't say this is what we need. And so just shoot your shot.
We're going to make a little transition now because I know you have an interest, a love and a passion for education. So tell us about your, your recent experience in education and, and let us know what, what your goal is moving forward.
Definitely. So earlier this year, I decided to run for the school board here in Pasadena. And I was very passionate about being able to provide opportunities for students here. And I guess in a nutshell, like what we mentioned in the first conversation we had, ensure that students aren't making the same mistakes. Right? I think that's so important, right? I have friends here and we all have the same mistakes. And I'm like, this is insanity, right? Like there's no need for, for folks to be having these same mistakes over and over and, you know, holding themselves back that little bit just because we're not communicating with each other. So I sort of went in with that, with that mindset, right? That I wanted to be able to provide a new perspective on the school board and be able to help our students not commit the mistakes I made, which I was like, there are plenty of them, right? Like they're not even just academically, but just like certain things, right? Like there's, everyone has these universal experiences. I think that, you know, social anxiety and, and stress. And I think that there's so much that could be learned from that if we just talk about it and share. And so I ran for the school board with that and I didn't end up winning unfortunately, but like you mentioned, the first conversation too opens up other doors.
Yeah.
So my passion for education just continued from, from my experiences as a college student, right? I didn't pursue that postgraduate. I ended up taking a job in the engineering field. But my personal philosophy is that the way to make the world better is by, by impacting those that are going to inherit it, right?
Yes.
Students in, in public ed are the easiest way, right? Because it's how we touch all of our, that's how we educate our electorate, our citizens. Folks are going to go on and inherit the world that we leave them. I didn't win that school board election, but I was able to, people think very different about it. But for me, my mind is for the most part, it was going a hundred miles an hour, which is why running and exercising is super important because it slows it down. But about two months into my job, I had so much to learn, like I still, I didn't learn everything I needed to learn until probably a few months ago, but I was still very much learning stuff. But I saw this like vision for my, my future at NASA. I was like, okay, I'm going to learn things for this job within this next year and I see where I could end up. And then my immediate next thought after that was I want to have more impact. And I was like, well, what does that mean to me? Like more impact you want to management? Do you want to have, make decisions that impact a lot more people, right? And ultimately, that's what it was for me. I was like, I think that I want to be able to make decisions that are going to touch a lot of people that, that are going to improve the lives and the, the way that we do things for just a large group of people. And I was like, that's law school. And again, and I say that's law school, that could be an MBA too. And there's different ways to go about it, but for me, I wanted to be able to get an understanding of this order, system of order that we have in the United States. They're in law. But for me, I wanted to be able to get an understanding of this order, system of order that we have in the United States that are in law. The week before I was going to take the LSAT, I had been studying for months, LSAT being the law school admissions test.
Yes.
I went to an LSAC Law School Admissions Council forum where they have, you know, they invite law schools from across the country and they send representatives all under one roof and you get to interact with them and talk to them. And that was an interesting experience for me because I was very self-aware of the schools I was going to talk to and the expectations I set for myself. And ultimately, those expectations were to only apply to Houston schools. And the reason behind that was because I thought that those are the only schools that were going to accept me. I didn't know that that was like the root of my thinking at the time. It wasn't until after I talked to all those schools, before I left, I stopped by the DEI table, diversity, equity and inclusion. I was just like, I'm going to make some friends. These people work with the law school admissions council. Maybe they can give me some advice. That sit, I sat down with them and that conversation stretched for an hour. I left the forum, which was in downtown Houston. I live in Pasadena, thirty minutes away. Two hours later, I drove back just to speak to those ladies. And I realized that I wasn't taking around advice, that I was setting my closing doors to myself because of my insecurities. And, you know, they were asking me questions like, you know, Andy, you know, you're doing this. You know that you tell students not to do this and here you are. And I was like, what this means to me, I was like, it means that I'm pulling everything out right now, that I'm not doing this the right way for me. And I'm going to stop applying right now. I'm going to reevaluate stuff and figure out how to do this the right way for me. And I'll possibly be back in a year, right? If I so, if I so believe that this is the path I need to go on. But I'm going to make sure that I'm not setting myself short regardless.
Yeah.
So I stopped doing that. The school board had been on my radar since I was in high school and then I got to interact with the school board members here. And I was in my head, I was like, I'm going to go to New York. I put a pin on it is what I did, right? I was like, I'll circle back with this later. I didn't think I would run for the school board until I was in my thirties. Cause I didn't think I'd have the opportunity. And so whenever that, the law school that first bout went out, I'm not going to rush it. Like if it's meant for me, it's meant for me and I'm going to go to it regardless. I trust that, that I'm such, I have such a passion for learning. That's what's going to be for me if it is, right? I was like, but right now, there's a dislike, there's an opportunity, right? In Pasadena, in my local community, to go and make a difference at the schools. And I think I can pull it off. And so that's sort of what led me to run for the school board. And then upon my loss, tying back full circle to the start of this question and
Yeah.
Forward, upon my loss, a part of me going into that, right, was like, I'm not going to allow myself to stagnate. I am going to have goals for myself. And if it's a school board, great. That just means any goals I have for myself regarding law school, regarding more school, they're going to be pushed out five, six, maybe eight years because my priority is going to be not even my job, because I can put it on the back burner and still do great there. I am going to prioritize the school board and making this area, this community, the school district we have better and as much as we can with my capacities. The school board trustee, right? Why didn't I get to do that? Because I didn't win. But I made new connections. I met new folks and sort of got to experience the world in a new light, a political light, a law oriented light, while also keeping my footing on the engineering world. So I was in the middle of my campaigning. I was like, I don't know what's going to happen, but at some point I'm going to go to law school. And whenever I didn't win, right? I did take a break because I had really been going since I started, I didn't mention this earlier, but I started working at NASA a week after I got back home from New York.
Oh, wow.
Recommend. It was about a month that I caught my breath, relaxed. The thing with running for office, I think it's pretty, in conversations with folks, it's pretty universal, but it comes to screeching halt, right? Either win and then like it's, the craziness continues, but the campaigning comes to screeching halt. Or you lose and then you sort of get to stay on your own terms, the relationships you keep. But like it comes to screeching halt. So that was nice. And I got to, I very much took advantage of it and rested a bit. And then I was, and again, like a month later, I was like, you know what? It's time. I think I'm a much stronger person. I'm a much stronger applicant.
Absolutely.
Take that forward into my future. I know that law school is the next step for me and I'm continuing down that path. And, you know, I should be applying, I'm going to be applying in a few months, but it's, so where it's going to take me career wise, I think it's still an open book, right? I like to keep my doors open and even more so after the whirlwind or the roller coaster of a ride that my career path has been from when I first started thinking about what I wanted to do to now and to the future. So I sort of, I have avenues, but very much an open mind.
I love your story. Okay. So I don't love the experiences that you had to go through, but this is really an opportunity for us to talk to our students and especially our parents as well. Our, at least the generation of, of our parents, they were under the mindset of you're going to start here, you're going to get yourself a, a job, a career. You're going to stay in that same path for the next twenty, thirty years, retire. And it was just from point A to point Z. And I think your generation, y'all want more than that. You want something that fulfills you, inspires you and motivates you, but you won't know what it is unless you go through these experiences and these experiences are growing opportunities. You, you would have never gotten the opportunity to know what's next for Andy, if you don't go through the steps that you had to go through.
Exactly. Yeah. It's so nice to hear like your perspective on that because you, I imagine you get a unique perspective getting to talk to folks on your podcast. And so I, that's like a little nugget. I'm for sure going to write down and tape with me because that's awesome about younger folks chasing after things, right?
Yeah.
Following the passion relentlessly without fear. This is an interesting observation that I, I think is amazing. And then the other thing that you mentioned, point A to point B, I think another important topic related to that is point A to point B, even in school, right? So whenever my parents thought I was going to go to medical school, they were like, you need to go undergrad, straight to medical school, right? No break in between. Even, I mean, even now, whenever I took that, whenever I was like, oh, I'm going to take a break, like deciding how long law school is going to take between when I graduated college and law school, there's like that anxiety about maybe they're not going to return to school. And it, I sort of had to push back there with them. And so then like, well, I sort of gave them the rationale as to why I was going to law school and why I was so confident that that fire wasn't just going to burn out. This view of education and your role in the world, right? That it's supposed to be linear. And you know, I, that that's narrative is, I agree with you. It's starting to shift quite a lot because some of the folks I look up to and that I hear from very, you know, just interesting paths that they did this and then they worked here for like two years is nothing. Some of them, some folks work ten, twenty years.
Yes.
Then they'll go to medical school or go to law school and they're stronger, stronger doctors, stronger attorneys because of it, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and listen, Andy, you and I are making really big changes here because I hear a lot of people from my generation, especially, you know, that are changing their careers in their thirties and forties or fifties, like literally changing their career. And us being here in the forefront with our youth is really opening the doors for them to say, this is the time to explore. And you will never know what's on the other side if you don't build that community, build those connections, get to talk to people. Those experiences build up and it makes you to who you are today because if you would have not followed these experiences, you would have not had the opportunity to find that passion, that, that little spark that's within you, that's going to take you to the next level. And I think, and this is, I'm putting on my parent's hat perspective here, is it's our own fear as a parent for our child not to be successful, but you have the ambition, you have the determination and that's definitely something that's within you and that's going to take you to whatever it is that you want to do next. Are you sharing this experience? I think it's very enlightening for, for students because sometimes we're so afraid of, and I, and I, I'll use this word very lightly, but failing, but failing is nothing but an opportunity to learn and an opportunity for you to discover more about yourself. If you don't have that opportunity, you can't continue to grow. And if you're struggling with something, it just means that you're learning more and that's taking you to the, whatever it is next in your life.
I agree. Failing, you fell forward, right? That's all that happens. You fell forward. You fell and then you move on.
Yeah.
Right? And maybe it's the same thing. Maybe you learned something that it's, like closes that door because it wasn't for you. So you go down another one. But if it was, right, you fell forward. There are very few things that are truly dead ends in life.
Absolutely. Always have this analogy of a baby. When a baby's starting to walk, it falls and what does the baby do? Gets back up and tries again. And I don't know why the way we grow up with that fear of getting ourselves back up, but we did it since we were a child.
Exactly. And yeah, and being comfortable with failing, I think being comfortable with failing in and of itself opens up so many doors, right? It's like, you're no longer, there's, you're not afraid of, you're obviously not afraid of succeeding. And if you're not afraid of failing, it's a win-win either way, right? And so realizing that and going with that mindset into things is, is powerful.
Thank you so much for sharing your, your experience with us. We are very excited that you have such a passion for education. And I understand right now, this is your, your career path that you think, but obviously go with an open door. I think you're going to be doing amazing things. Continue to discover yourself and who you are as a person. You being here with us today, you have shared a wealth of knowledge and we really appreciate it. And hopefully you'll, you'll be back soon, maybe after law school or whatever's next and, and continue us with your journey.
Definitely. I, I really appreciate you having me and I hope for the folks listening that this was helpful and that you folks intake nuggets of advice and, and not make the same mistakes. I go make new mistakes. It's inevitable and that's awesome, right? You've learned and I hope that it's all helpful.
Hi friend. Thank you for listening in. If you enjoyed this episode, it would mean so much to me if you share it with a friend. Share it with them right now or even better. Tag me so I can personally thank you for helping us build our community. I'm so thankful for each and every one of you. Let's keep in touch and I'll talk to you soon. Adios.